... fifteenth, 2022 meeting of the Rutherford County Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Our chaplain, Romel McMurray, will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner McMurray.
Let us pray, please. Lord, thank you for allowing us to assemble in this chamber this evening. I ask that you give us all the wisdom and the knowledge to perform our responsibilities to the best of our ability. Allow us to be a unified body. Unity is strength. Where there is teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can and will be achieved. We have so many great leaders amongst us. Prepare us to do those great things for our great county. I ask that your grace and mercy continues to flow over all of us, for our county, for our state, and for our country. For we know that all things that work together produces good. So I'll seal this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen. Let us pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blue, white, stars, my favorite blue. God keep you strong and ever true. His pride and love, the salute, the flag, Tennessee.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, call to roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Oliver is present. Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Mr. Gooch.
Here.
Mr. Sereno.
Here.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, we'll need to approve our minutes from our August and, I believe, our September 1st meeting. I'll call on our pro tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The August minutes, those have been reviewed, and I find no exceptions. September 1st minutes, just a late-breaking change on page 356. If we can change the word mayor to chairman, this will be on the next to the last paragraph. Having said that, I'll move that we dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion.
Are these, Mr. Chairman?
Need a second.
Point of order, are they going to be separate or together?
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Irvin.
Are they going to be together or separate? Because we don't have a basis for, the new commissioners don't have a basis for approving the August minutes.
The motion was made together. Would you like to change the motion?
No, sir, I would not. The minutes have been looked at by myself. I think you reviewed them. The clerk has reviewed them. If a commissioner feels uncomfortable, then they can just abstain.
We have a motion and a second to approve the August minutes and the September 1st minutes. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection?
Objection.
One objection.
I'm staying.
One abstain. That means that the minutes for August and September 1st have been approved. Thank you. At this time, we have a C task resolution of appreciation, and I'll call on our mayor, Mayor Carr.
When I was a member of the Tennessee General Assembly, from time to time, I had the opportunity to serve with a number of members who had an extended number of years of service to their communities and to the state of Tennessee. But I don't think I ever had the opportunity to stand before any group of legislators or legislative delegation and with such great pride for this community, declare a level of service that, quite honestly, very, very few communities across the state can claim. And so it is with a great deal of pride that, on behalf of the mayor's office and the county of Rutherford, that I recognize the fact that, along with you, that we have five distinguished members of this county commission, well, currently four members and one past member, who have served exemplary service, and it's with great pride and recognition that C task also recognized them. And so we're here this evening to recognize their length of service. And so if you will join me in recognizing Commissioner Robert P., if you will come forward, please, sir, for 24 years of service. So if you will recognize Commissioner Robert P., please. Thank you, David. Also, if you want to add to that list, Commissioner Trey Gooch, 24 years of service. If you will recognize Commissioner Trey Gooch, please. And of course, our own Chairman, Commissioner Jeff Phillips, 28 years of service. And of course, who could ever forget our past Commissioner, Ms. Carol Cook. Carol, please come forward. Where are you, Carol? There she is. And finally, last but not least, Commissioner Allen McAdoo, 44 years of service. How about that? If you will indulge me for just one more second, please. Tennessee Counter Commissioners Association presents certificate with these fine commissioners in recognition of outstanding service and dedication to Rutherford County Commission for serving their years of service. This certificate of appreciation is presented with admiration and respect for your service. I hope we can all live up to their standard. Thank you very, very much. God bless.
Mr. Chairman, if I may break decorum for just a moment, does anybody else's iPad not pulling up records? Thank you. We need IT down. If anybody else is having none of the iPads or some of the iPads aren't uploading.
iPad's are not working or loading. Did you turn it off?
Go forward with public comment.
That was not my intention. I think we have an agenda on paper. We can roll.
Please proceed. Don't wait on my account. Without objection, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is the confirmation of our standing committee selections. The way this will work, we'll call the chairman of the steering committee forward and make those announcements, and we'll open the floor for discussion at that particular time. So if you would. These were originally under elections and confirmations. We removed it from that simply to kind of...
All right, commissioners, we'll start off with steering. Craig Harris, Pettis Reed, Paul Johnson, Allen McAdoo, Mike Kush, Michael Rather, Jonathan Beverley. Public Safety, Jonathan Beverley, Pettis Reed, Romel McMurray, Michael Rather, Joshua James, Commissioner Sereno, Hope Oliver. Health and Ed, Commissioner Oliver, Commissioner Davison, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner McMurray, Commissioner Dodd, Commissioner Gooch. Public Works, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Piercy, Commissioner P., Commissioner Anthony Johnson, Commissioner Joshua James, Commissioner Dodd, Chairman Phillips. Property Management, Commissioner Dodd, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Davison, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner Anthony Johnson, Commissioner Irvin. Purchasing, Chairman Phillips, Chairman McAdoo, Chairman Boyd, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyd, Chairman Gooch, Commissioner Anthony Johnson, Chairman P. Budget, Commissioner P., Chairman P., Commissioner Sereno, Commissioner Irving, Chairman Gooch, Chairman Harris, Commissioner Piercy, and Commissioner Paul Johnson. Those are all of them, sir. I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Who was the second? We have a motion and a second to approve the list for our standing committees for the year 2022 and 2023. Any comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Motion to approve carries. Congratulations. This time, I'll call on our chairman pro tem, Trey Gooch, and we'll call each committee together up here at the podium, and we'll call a mini-meeting to order, and we'll elect a chair and a vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll look at budget and finance committee first. So if Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Shantow, Commissioner Irvin, myself, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Piercy, and Commissioner Paul Johnson, if you'll come to the floor, please. And I'll call the budget and finance committee meeting to order, seeking nomination for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Robert P.
Commissioner Robert P. Any other nominations? At this time, I'll seek a motion to cease nominations and to elect Chairman P. by acclamation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Gentlemen, one last thing. Date and meeting time.
Thank you, Chairman P. At this time, we'll close the budget and finance committee meeting and open the public safety committee meeting to order. Commissioner Beverley, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner McMurray, Commissioner Rather, Commissioner James, Commissioner Sereno, and Commissioner Oliver. And at this time, I'll take nominations for chairman.
I nominate...
Any other nominations?
Move that we close.
We have a motion. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll now take nominations for vice chairman. Everybody get in a hurry. Have a motion for Commissioner Rather.
I'll second that.
Have a second. Any other nominations? Do we have a motion to nomination cease, and we elect him by acclamation?
So moved.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our regular meeting time is usually the fourth Monday of the month. Is that satisfactory with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just set it that time. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Do you have that date down, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. At this time, we'll close the public works and planning committee and open the health and education committee. Commissioner Oliver, Commissioner Davison, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner McMurray, Commissioner Dodd, and myself. At this time, I'll ask for nominations for chairman.
I nominate Phil Wilson.
Nominate Phil Wilson.
I'm going to nominate Phil Dodd.
Okay, are you withdrawing your name?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Commissioner Phil Dodd. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to cease nominations and elect Commissioner Dodd as acclamation? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Phil Wilson.
Any other nominations?
I nominate him.
I'm Oliver. So we have two up for this. So we will, I think we'll roll to a vote within the city. And I think the first time around, vote for your number-one candidate, and the majority will have a, we shouldn't have a tie, so. And I'm going to do it like this. I'm going to say the candidate's name, and we are going to... I don't want to be putting everybody on the spot and have them go first or last, but I don't think raising the hand works. I think it needs to be...
Just a couple.
So we will, I'll just call roll. I'm going to start with Trey, and if you would, name the person that you want for vice chair of health and ed.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
And I will vote for Commissioner Wilson. So that's, I show five votes for Phil Wilson as vice chair and two votes for Hope. With that being said, I don't know, do we have to motion this or... So we have selected Phil Wilson as vice chair. And thus far, we've been meeting fourth Tuesday after the first Monday at 5:30, if that's good with y'all. Work it out if you do.
It'll be six o'clock.
We've got a request for 6:00 p.m. Historically, we met at 5:30. Is there... Close to 6:00 p.m.
Got to help you out, Commissioner Oliver.
Like tonight was tough, wasn't it?
Exactly.
We do have a secretary that takes her minutes, and she's an employee of the county, and I don't know that she necessarily wants to do that much more overtime, but I think we can approve that. And if there's some conflict with our secretary, we can work that out. Thank you, committee. We've got a lot of hard work to do, so look forward to it. Thanks.
Having said that, we will close the health and ed meeting and open the property management committee meeting. Commissioner Dodd, Commissioner Phil Wilson, Commissioner Davison, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Boyd, Commissioner Anthony Johnson, and Commissioner Irving. At this time, I'll open the, ask for nominations for chairman.
I nominate Allen McAdoo.
You sure about that? I mean, okay, click that. Second. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Moved, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McAdoo. Thank you, committee. Now, we would open the floor for vice chairman. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Anthony Johnson.
Other nominations?
Make motion, nomination cease.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, property management usually meet at fourth Thursday at 5:30. Is there any issue with that? Sure? Okay.
All right. Work it out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. We will close the property management meeting. Purchasing, we'll elect their chairman at their meeting. Well, the mayor's the chairman, so they will elect their vice chair at the meeting. And that meeting, is it scheduled already? Yes. The third Tuesday, and this is at 4:30 p.m. Those committee members are Commissioner Phillips, McAdoo, Boyd, myself, Anthony Johnson, Robert P., and of course, Mayor Joe Carr as chairman. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Public Works, we're opening the public works committee meeting. Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Piercy, Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Anthony Johnson, Commissioner James, Commissioner Dodd, and Commissioner Phillips. And at this time, I'll take nominations for chairman.
I nominate Todd.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to cease nominations?
I nominate Mr. Piercy.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you. All right, I would like to open nominations for vice chair. Any nominations?
I shall elect you.
All right.
It's always up.
Any nomination cease? Acclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair, Piercy.
Same meeting.
Yeah. Are we okay, everybody okay with the regular meeting time of the Tuesday after the first Monday at 5:30? All right.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush. We will close the public works committee meeting. And just an announcement, there is a special called purchasing meeting on October the 4th, and that will be at 4:30. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Very good. Next on our list is public comments. We have a public hearing starting at 6:30, but we've got time, I think. I think there's been one person that has signed up, and it's Ms. Allen from the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance. Susan, you know the drill, and I'm sure you'll stay within the three minutes.
I'm planning on it. Good evening, Mayor Carr, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. It's good to see all the familiar faces and all the new faces of the people that are going to lead this county for the next four years. The last couple of months, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance has had the pleasure of meeting with eight of the new commissioners and several of the other candidates for county commission. It was an opportunity to share a little of our history and some of the issues we've worked on, as well as an opportunity to learn the reasons for you choosing this path of public service. And it's gratifying to know that we share many of the same goals. Having participated from the citizen's side of local government for the past 20 years, it has been our practice to check commission agendas and minutes and follow the meetings. We shared our concern that commissioners and the public often don't have enough time to study the agenda and all its documents before the Board of Commissioners meeting. It's frustrating when we, as interested citizens, can't access these documents on the county website with enough time to contact our commissioners about items they will be discussing. For instance, in August, the commission agenda didn't come out until that morning. When we expressed this dilemma to the commissioners we met with and with Commissioner Phillips, everyone understood our concerns. The monthly calendar has been the same forever. In a single month, some standing committees, some standing committees meet before the commission date and some after. Those meetings, those meetings later in the month don't make their reports to the commission until the following month. It would seem more logical to have all the committees report to the full commission in the same calendar month. We would like to request that the steering committee take a look at the monthly meeting calendar and consider different dates that it would allow more time for the final commission agenda to be distributed, so that everyone has plenty of time to digest the entire agenda and all of the accompanying documents. This is simply not the case now. This would give time for all, citizens and commissioners alike, to ask questions and to get questions answered. We respect and appreciate the job you do, and we believe having more time to absorb the commission agenda before the meeting is a practical and logical solution to better government and better informed citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We're a couple of minutes early, but we're going to go ahead and get into our public hearings, which is item L on your agenda, and I'll ask our planning director, Doug Demossi, to come forward.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. We have two public hearings for your consideration tonight. The first is by Taylor Ford for Lebanon Road Partnership. This is located at 5160 Lebanon Pike. The existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is commercial services. For the benefit of the newer commissioners, we have three, what I would call conventional commercial classifications for commercial zoning. Commercial neighborhood is the most restrictive. Commercial services is kind of in the middle. Commercial general is the more wide-open of the three. So what they're asking for is the one that's in the middle. The applicant would like to zone this property to build a mini-storage facility with retail along the frontage of Lebanon Pike, so they'd have the retail along the front, and then they'd have the mini-warehouse to uses toward the back. Mini-storage buildings are classified as general personal services in our county zoning ordinance, which are only allowed in the commercial services zone by special exception. That means they're not allowed by right. They would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special approval for that. So should this application be granted, the applicant would have to make a separate application to the Board of Zoning Appeals in a subsequent month for the mini-storage use. A concept plan has been included with your agenda packets. A concept plan has been included with your agenda packets. Now, this is not a plan development application, so this is not a binding plan by any means. But it does give the commissioners an idea of how they wish to develop the property and move forward. We have told the applicant as well that an engineered site plan would be required should this application be approved and special exception granted for the mini warehouses. And that's where they will show that they meet all of the county requirements, such as parking, landscaping, etc. The concept plan does show two connections to Lebanon Pike. The road transitions from a two-lane to a three-lane road as one travels northbound to Lebanon Pike as it fronts this property. So we've asked the applicant to evaluate this as they plan for their access points. The intersection at Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road is not a signalized intersection currently, but there have been a couple of plan development applications that have been approved at that intersection. Well, one at that intersection, another one a little adjacent to it down Central Valley Road. And there are planned traffic improvements with both of those planned developments, including a signal at that intersection. Now, Lebanon Pike is also a federal state road, so any new or modified access points would require approval from TDOT. And again, they would have to be shown on a engineered site plan. Commercial properties, CES specifically, are required to provide a type-two buffer along residentially zoned property lines. This buffer has an average width of 30 feet, which can be reduced to a minimum of 15 feet if a solid visual screen, such as a privacy fence, is installed, and plantings are also required. They can use existing material as part of that, consistent with our zoning regulations. There's also requirements for landscaping in the parking areas, as well as the property lines themselves. And again, the conformance of those would be shown on a site plan. And our performance standards regarding noise, odors, dust, etc., would also apply. The Planning Commission did have some questions about the proposed use. This is more of a speculative use at this time, as far as what the retail is concerned. We did answer they would be allowed to do whatever is allowed in a commercial services zone, but that was, again, more speculative in nature for the retail. And again, the mini warehouses would have to be done by special exception. Following discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Being no one, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ-22-019, rezoning request for Taylor Ford for Lebanon Road Partnership. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Being no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Chairman Phillips, this property and project lies within my district. There's not a whole lot of other property there close to it. The city owns the park. It backs up to the river. There was one other property to the south. That property has since sold, and they're trying, they're kind of in the process of getting the same thing done to it. I've had no negative cause on this. I move for its approval.
Staff comments?
Staff comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Piercy. Have a motion to approve, and a second, Commissioner P. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion to approve carries. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second and final rezoning tonight is for property located along Bill France Road/Mona Road by Chris Rudd for Mona Partners 1 LLC. They are asking for a rezoning from residential medium density to employment and activity center. Again, for the benefit of our newer commissioners, the EAC district is one of our special character areas. We identified in our comprehensive plan some areas around the interchanges that we would foresee more mixed uses, maybe industrial, but also some heavier commercial, regular commercial, and maybe residential multifamily. This zone makes accommodations for all of those. Excuse me. The applicant, again, would like to zone this property, EAC. They'd like to build a truck-trailer storage area. This would mostly be for overnight parking of 18-wheeler trailers. It would not be a manned facility. And the EAC does limit commercial uses to 65% lot coverage. Industrial uses are not limited on their lot coverage. A concept plan has been included with your agenda packets, which are on your iPads. Again, similar to the last application, this is not a plan development, so what you're looking at on the iPad is not something they're locked into, but again, gives you an idea of how they would like to proceed. The concept plan does show two connections to Bill France Road. There are no connections shown onto Mona Road, which is to the south. Bill France kind of takes that big curve, goes down, and then T intersects into what was, or what is currently Mona Road. Staff did have concerns about the condition, or does have concerns about the condition of Bill France Road and the I-840 interchange. If this were to be approved, and we did see a site plan, we would expect that a traffic study, along with an analysis of the condition of Bill France Road, would be part of the site plan's submittal. And again, all parking and vehicular use areas would have to meet our requirements, as demonstrated on a site plan. Similar to the last application, they'd be looking at a type-two buffer along residentially zoned properties. This is a little bit of an unusual property, because it's completely surrounded by right-of-way. We do not require any buffering along rights-of-way, but we've had some discussions with the applicant about this. Should this be approved, that we would expect to see some sort of landscaping or screen or something around the site. They would also have to provide interior landscaping based on the amount of off-street parking that they have. Again, that would be demonstrated on a site plan, and our performance standards, as discussed earlier in the last application, would also apply. The Planning Commission asked some clarifying questions on the operation of the business. The applicant stated that they would sign a master lease with a client, and that client would be the one storing trailers on the property. The trailers would be mostly empty, no storage of goods, except for maybe wooden pallets, from what the applicant stated. And the lot wouldn't be open for anyone at all just to park their trailer. Again, it would have to be a part of that master lease. He stated that they're currently looking at about 267 stalls, with the lot usually about 50% full. There were several people who spoke on this item during the public hearing, and I see several of them here tonight. Most of the concerns dealt with the current lack of water and sewer infrastructure in the area, as well as possible drainage issues. There was also some safety concerns, should additional truck traffic be introduced to this side of I-840. The residents did state, and I'm sure we'll reiterate tonight, that they've already had some issues with truck drivers parking along Bill France Road and essentially just relieving themselves on the side of the road. They did ask if there was anything that we could do as staff to possibly curtail some of that activity. That is still part of Bill France Road, which is a state route. We have reached out to TDOT. We're still trying to maintain some sort of communication with them. But we did talk with our highway superintendent, and being that that's a state road, there wasn't going to be a whole lot that he could do with that situation. Some of the planning commissioners did state that they felt the development on this property might help provide some additional security to the area, more activity, more eyes on the road, if you will, as the proposed development would have lighting and cameras as well. The applicant also indicated they'd be willing to place a restroom trailer on the property to reduce neighbors' concerns on that issue. So after discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. Again, I'll be happy to answer questions. When some of the folks that are here from the area come up to speak, they've submitted some pictures that they would like to have shown, so our IT folks are aware of that. Again, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Rather.
Not necessarily question confirmation. There was an issue with trucks already parking there, and it was brought up to get the highway department involved to kind of block that area off, because I have a CDL license. The trucks will park wherever they can.
Right.
So if they can, they won't park there. So is that something that is involved in this, and will be worked on to put motors or bollards or whatever?
Well, there's an area, especially toward, when you get toward the end of Bill France, where T intersects into Mona Road, there's a kind of an open area there. I think it was where a lot of that issue was taking place. I've reached out to TDOT. Again, we're still trying to make some contact, but the thought was maybe put some sort of a guardrail there or something, see if that's something that they'd be willing to do. But that's part of, not necessarily, you can't really subject this to that, but that is something that we're working on, trying to get TDOT to help us with.
Other questions? Mr. Demossi. At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ-22-020, rezoning request for Chris Rudd for Mona Partners located along Mona Road. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Our guidelines are three minutes, and if you would, state your name and address.
My name's Ann Hillard, and my address is 11885 Mona Road. We sent some pictures. If y'all would put that on the screen of our road and everything. And also, the thing about our issue is like safety and also the contamination, because we are all on well water. And we were told at the last meeting that we wouldn't have to worry about grease or oil or anything like that from trailers, because they're just parked trailers. Well, that's not true. I work at a company with these, I work with unloading these trailers, day in and day out. It's my job. So I know the debris and stuff that's in these trailers, that come from these trailers. You know, anytime it rains, I mean, all you gotta do is look on the ground, and there's rainbow on the ground from all the grease and oil from all the trailers coming in and parking, and then, you know, I unload these trailers, I reload them, and then I send them out to lots like this, you know, to be picked up by shipping offices. There's grease, there's dirt. Trailers are not taken care of. There's holes in the trailers, there's holes in the roof, there's holes in the floor. You know, to let rainwater and whatever contaminants are in that trailer from whatever was shipped, you know, that rainwater gets in there and washes onto the ground, and the ground absorbs the water, obviously. Where is it else it's going to go? I don't know if they're putting the pictures up there. So this right here is, if you, it's a little dark, sorry, I work third shift, so they're taken at night, but these are grease, buildup of grease, where the fifth wheel comes in. Pull the trailer, and when they pull out, there's grease on the fifth wheel, there's grease underneath. That gets built up. It falls off onto the ground, causing the contaminations and whatnot. Safety is also a big concern for us, with just everything going on. It's already been mentioned. But the water contamination from all the grease and everything, and the oil, and trucks leak, you know, everybody's vehicle has an oil leak sometime or whatever, whether you get that fixed or not, that's still going onto the ground. And again, once it rains, that water gets down into the ground into our wells. Where it's coming from is downhill, where my property is, where Mr. Delilah's property is, and that's going to contaminate our water. We don't have any way to get city water out there. We've tried for 28 years, and nobody seems to care. So now we're having this, and with us being on well water, how are y'all going to guarantee that y'all aren't going to contaminate our water to make it unsafe for us to drink, bathe in, feed our dogs? You know, these are the concerns that me and my family and neighborings have concerns about. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? I don't know.
My name's William Hillard. I live at 11899 Mona Road. And the concern that I have is there's 14-foot of rock that they're going to have to make it level. There's no septic system that doesn't perk, period. I live at the bottom of the hill. If you look at some of the pictures, the bottom of the hill goes right into my water stream, and that ties into Gladeville's water. So that's my concern. And anybody that thinks that the brake dust on them old trailers, that's asbestos. I was a plumber for 38 years. I can tell you just about anything you want to know about asbestos. And when the rain comes and it washes off, where's it go? The spores right on down through there, right to the bottom of the hill. There's no way that they can do that without proper drainage, and not counting that the drug addicts and the people that's going to be hiding in them trailers. They say they're going to put up a fence. I'm a fat man, and I can crawl over a fence. And that's, but the main thing is the water. You know, then you got the other people that want to build on around us. They took and wanted me to take my property and move down the road a quarter mile. But they didn't want to give me what I wanted for my property, but they want to tell me what they want to give me. I don't need their money, but I do need water, and I need sewer. Other than that, I guess it's up to y'all to make that decision. But I think if you do something like that, it's wrong. I lived there for 28 years, y'all doubled my taxes like five times, and I haven't gotten the road paved in 28 years. But you'll let them come and build a trucking place up here. And the thing about Bill Francis, they only paved up to the interstate. They didn't even pave all of Bill Francis. They stopped at the curve. But yet they had signs and traffic and all the oil trucks and all that stuff down there right by my pond. So I had no water tested, and now Gladeville's testing, and I'm going to let Smyrna test it. So there'll be three tests, and I own my mental rights. So if something happens, somebody's going to have to do something about that. I would like to see water and sewer before they do anything, because it's only fair. I mean, now, we pay our taxes, but we don't get anything for it. Nothing. That's all I've got to say. I didn't want to apologize for the last time I was here, because I got a little upset, but it happens. That's where I live. Y'all have a good day, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just been informed that we're having some trouble hearing, so if you would talk a little louder into the mic.
Okay. My name's Delilah Tassero. I live directly across from the property that he's wanting to put the trucking place in. My concern is, he said last time he wanted to put a pond in, and everything he puts in over there is going to run off on me, directly straight across from it. Septic, I don't know if y'all approve this property as being commercial without being septic-approved. That's my question to you all. Is there actually been a septic approval there to put, install anything there? My understanding, you've got to, anything built in Tennessee, in the state of Tennessee, you have to have a septic approval. And as far as that goes, that's a question I've got for you all. Has that been done? And from the last I heard, it didn't even perk, so that's what I was always told. But if he's going to start building, last time we were here, he said 267 stalls, put a pond in and fenced it. And I talked to EPA, and they said anything being built on the property has to have a septic permit. And I don't know if that's being looked at or not, but I am concerned about it, because like he says, we're all on well water, it's going to come our way. The pond overflows, it's going to come my way. I'm directly across from it. But that's my issues and concerns, so you guys, if you, you know, I don't know for a fact that you all given that approval, you have to have that septic approval permit. You've got to have that septic permit. So that's something you all can tell me, I don't know. But I do know you have to have it in the state of Tennessee to build anything on the property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can you hear me now? Hi, I'm Trish Hillard. I live at 11899 Mona Road. I also help provide some of these photos as well, too. Our biggest concern is, of course, our water and our septic. Our water comes from the Fall Creek water supply there. We've always had good water. It tells you something if all of our animals have lived past 16, 17 years old and always have drank it. Now, we're concerned that our water is going to get contaminated with all the grease and the oil and the things that is coming from the trucks. If you also look at these pictures, I have some pictures that are you're going around the curve of the rocks that you actually see. That concerns me as well, too, because when we moved out there, we had a great, beautiful pond at the beginning of our property. When they started building I-840, and they blew up the Mona Road Bridge and built the other one. When they busted that bridge on the road down there, it busted the seal for our pond. Okay? So with that being said, our pond doesn't hold the water anymore, so we are filling that in, but we have a live stream that goes to everyone's water out there. that in, but we have a live stream that goes to everyone's water out there. And let me tell, it's good water. Uh, like my husband said, we are getting it all documented, um, gotta pick up more of it tomorrow. But that is our biggest concern. I mean, there's no way you guys can tell me, sitting here, that that water coming from that hill and it rains for two or three days or even just a half a day, that it's not going to run down there. And the water that you see right there in the pond, uh, when you see that picture of that water, that is our spring. That is what is flowing every day. And that grade on that from where they're going to build is completely downhill. I mean, it's a heck of a, uh, a hill to actually sled down, to be honest with you. So, that's how fast you can really go down that hill. Pictures doesn't do it justice, but a field trip might be worth the, might be worth it. But, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner, I'm Matt Taylor of SCC 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. I represent, uh, the applicant, Mr. Chris Rudd, he is, uh, with me as well. So, did want to address a couple of things, reiterate, reiterate a few things that Doug had mentioned and, uh, to address some neighbors' concerns. So, we try, we will, uh, address their concerns in two different ways. One, through operations of the site, which is through the master lease and who can come on this site, who can utilize the site, and so that will minimize, um, any riffraff, that will minimize who can come on. Uh, also with design, and so, um, multiple things have been said about stormwater and runoff. Uh, we will have detention ponds, uh, on this property that capture all the runoff. Uh, it will hold that runoff so that any sediment or debris can fall out to meet the county's stormwater quality requirements. Those ponds will also detain and hold that water and release it slowly so we don't put more water on our neighbors downstream. So, those act twofold, that happens with every development that you have in the county. So, I, as a professional engineer, would design that, and then that would be reviewed by your engineering department, uh, Ms. Huffmeyer or Mr. Hughes. Uh, we would also be installing cameras and lighting, uh, to create a more safe environment on site. The condition of the roadway had been mentioned. Uh, we have already engaged a geotech engineer, we've started coordinating that with Mr. Brooks, uh, on where to do those corrings and what he is looking for to determine if any upgrades are needed to the roadway, that we would do that before we would start any operations on the property. Uh, again, we would be fencing this property to create the security and to keep out some of the concern that Mr. Hillard mentioned earlier. Uh, again, this, uh, prop, this proposed plan does agree with the comprehensive plan, um, that the county's got adopted as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, my client is here as well if you have any questions of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? One second, anyone else wishing to speak? Can have a follow-up?
11-899 Mona Road. You can build all the ponds you want, but if everybody remembers 2010 when the flood came and flooded everything and everybody was underwater, what happened then? Why not just go ahead and bite the bullet and put the sewer through there? Or better yet, why didn't they do it when they built 840? I mean, it was, it was, that would've been the easiest time to do it. There was 10 families living out there and everybody left us alone. They got water down every road up through there, even gas, but we can't get water or sewer, but you wanna put a bunch of greasy trucks up there and run our water like our lives don't matter? I mean, there's, that, I mean, it just don't sound right, they're gonna have to go through 14-foot of rock to get it leveled. What's all that blast gonna do to my stuff? That's, other than that, that's all I really got to say, and I won't, I won't bother y'all again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Signal one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
I wish I thought when I ran for Commissioner, I had 840 right through my district in several locations. I've received D-Roll phone calls and opposition, I did watch the planning commission, I wasn't present, but I watched the whole thing. All over the county, it's not just where I'm at, it's water, it's traffic, it's the deer and the turkeys, we all hear the same thing. I watched that meeting, the water was addressed, will be addressed. Doug can confirm that and Matt confirmed that, it's a parking lot. And honestly, I've visited that site several times, uh, on other possible applicants, Clyde Ramtree and I have met out there a couple of times on different application. I honestly think that is gonna be an improvement as far as the riffraff, they like to go out there and do whatever they do. This will possibly eliminate all that. So, based on what I've listened to, what I know, um, and I just move to approve it. And I, I wanna support and I believe in our planning department, engineering department, I believe in the planning commission. And it was unanimous, all these issues have been dealt with or will be dealt with, and at the end of the day, if I'm not wrong, this is not, if, if, if a hiccup occurs after this vote, it can still have to come back because something that was realized or an issue, is that not true?
Okay, if the application is approved tonight, the next step would be a site plan. If there's any issues that are identified at that time, they would be handled through planning staff and the planning commission, it wouldn't come back here to this, to this board.
Yes, so, if those issues could not be resolved...
Well, in that situat, and we've run into that a few times with larger residential developments, there've been times when they have to submit construction drawings for sections of subdivisions that aren't meeting our regulations even though they've gotten preliminary plan approval, there's something that they're not meeting on the construction drawings, we won't let them start construction until they meet all of our regulations.
Yeah, so, same thing applies here.
The same thing would apply with the site plan, yes, sir.
Same thing applies the last time I spoke up and talked about a development in my area. So, Mr. Chairman, with all that being said, I move to approve this.
Staff comments? With staff comments?
Sorry. With staff comment, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. We have a motion to approve...
I'd like to, I, I have a question just for a follow-up.
Let's, let's get a second first. We have a motion and a second to approve. Now, Commissioner James.
You, you mentioned, um, early on about that a big problem that you're finding out there where truckers were coming down to relieve themselves and so forth. With this being a private yard and fenced off, would it not attract more of that and not deter that away?
Well, that's part of the reason we were looking at, uh, getting with TDOT and trying to contact them about making some possible, I'd say improvements, not maybe the right word, but changes in that area to discourage some of these trucks from doing that, uh, or people who are pulling over to do some of that activity now. Again, that's something we're gonna have to work through TDOT since that part of the road is a state road, but I think the thought of the planning commission was at least that if there's more activity going on, more security, maybe that would be a deterrent to that as well. So, kind of a two-pronged approach.
But you haven't heard anything back from TDOT yet?
Other questions? Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 22-020, rezoning request for Chris Rudd for Mona Partnerships. All those in favor of that motion to approve, let's go on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
18 yes, 2 no.
Motion to approve passes. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Demasi, you have anything else? Doug, while you're here, could you give us a quick update on the comprehensive plan and where we stand with that?
I gave you the chance, bud, I did, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't take the bait, sorry. Uh, yes, the, uh, the comprehensive plan, our long-range plan update, uh, is, is underway for our newer commissioners. Uh, I think the first step that we're gonna do is, uh, our consultant team with the Greater Nashville Regional Council, GNRC, I know they've got an upcoming meeting with Mayor Carr to discuss, uh, just the general, uh, issues with GNRC with him, but also they'd like to schedule another follow-up meeting that's more specific into the comprehensive plan, get a little more of a deep dive. I think our first order business after getting that would be to appoint a steering committee to help move things along, uh, with Mayor Carr's input, of course, but we'd also like to, you know, talk, reach out to our, uh, the newly-elected commissioners as well to talk with them a little bit more about that. So, kind of at a little bit of a lull right now just because of the election and everything, but, uh, looking forward to, to working with the new commissioners and, uh, those, uh, existing commissioners as well as, and Mayor Carr to, to start pushing that process forward.
Thank you, Doug. Next on our agenda is elections and confirmations. Call on our steering vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we'll start with item one. This is the election of notaries. Listing of notaries may be found on your iPad, you've also received these through, um, SharePoint. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson? Any questions? All those in favor of, uh, electing the notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve, Carries, thank you.
Item two, steering would like to confirm the reappointment of Jerry Sartain to the Board of Zoning Appeals, vacancy, five-year term set to expire 10/2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm, Carries, thank you.
Item three, steering would like to confirm Jerry Sartain to the Beer Board vacancy, this is a three-year term set to expire 9/2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second to confirm Jerry Sartain to the Beer Board. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm, Carries, thank you.
Item four, steering would like to confirm Larry Jernigan to Codes Enforcement, Adjustments and Appeals Board vacancy, this is a three-year term set to expire 9/2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Larry Jernigan, Codes Enforcement. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm, Carries, thank you.
Item five, we'd also like to confirm Tucker Markham to a PBA vacancy to fill a retiring member's seat, remaining term set to expire 1/2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Tucker Markham to the PBA vacancy, this is an unexpired term. Any questions or comments? All... Sure, can. Commissioner Davidson?
Um, I have a few concerns over this applicant, if you don't mind. Uh, I had a chance to look over his application and there doesn't appear to be a history of education or employment to support this nomination for this seat. And I was curious if there was a way we could possibly have Mr. Markham come up front so we could ask questions or no?
Need to, uh, motion to suspend the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and allow him to come up here, and I'd also like to make comments afterwards.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended.
Floor's yours. Thank you, Chairman Phillips. For those I have not had the chance to meet yet, my name is Tucker Markham, I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County, born and raised in the Rockville community, um, and currently live in downtown Murfreesboro. I am very excited about the opportunity to serve this body and the people of Rutherford County on the public building authority. I am fully committed to putting in the time and work to serve this body and the community on this board. Since my, um, recommendation from steering last week, I have already, uh, reached out to several of the current board members, the board attorney, uh, and even went and visited both the, uh, Kitchell and Rockville Public Safety Buildings being currently under construction right now. As to my experience, I've been blessed to have built a successful business, um, that provides management consulting and also corporate relations and community engagement for companies across the southeast. I strongly believe that my experience in contract negotiations, vendor management, and running and executing various operations with budgets ranging from as little as $20,000 to well over $3 million plus make me uniquely qualified to serve the people of Rutherford County on this board. Knowing that this board looks at projects of all sizes, both large and small, I think that experience is vital. And I really am truly looking forward to serve. Um, you won't find someone who is more willing to put the time and effort in and someone who is more committed to learn than I am. So, I'm, I'm, will answer questions, but I guess that's up to Chairman Phillips, so...
Any questions for Mr. Markham? Any questions at all?
Thank you. I was about to run away from you.
Commissioner Piercy.
Did you fill out an application for this job?
Ye, yes, sir, so, um...
Wait, I'm not...
I apologize.
Can you tell me the qualifications that you had to have to fill out your application? Was there any, and if they are, I'd like to know what they were that said you had to qualify for this job?
I, I don't...
Or this position?
I don't believe so, sir. I, I read the bylaws and there really wasn't a, it wasn't laid out if there was any specific qualifications for this board. The only qualifications that I know of are, when it gets announced, submit your application in a, within seven days of the, uh, of the board, uh, of the commission meeting or steering committee meeting. Um, but when I read the bylaws, I didn't find anything that, uh, that specified qualifications. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Gooch, Chairman Pro Tem Gooch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Markham, the PBA has a lot on its plate, and there's been several meetings that they could not conduct their business because they lacked a quorum. Uh, do you have the time, um, to, to make these meetings and can commit to that so we can take care of our business?
Yes, sir. Um, I believe they meet on the first Thursday of every month according to Brick Murphy, um, and I will be there and, you know, even yesterday, I was riding around looking at the public safety building, uh, buildings being built, so, uh, I'm willing to invest the time in
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Markham.
Thank you, Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Tucker Markham to the PBA vacancy, this is, uh, to fill an unexpired term for a retiring member. Other questions? We'll go on the board for this. We'll go on the board for this.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Eighteen yes, one no, two abstain.
Motion to confirm carries.
Item six, steering would like to confirm Ted Beatty, Joanna Medlin, Romel McMurray, Robert P., and Craig Harris to the Ethics Committee. This is an affirmed, this is affirmed every September. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Ted Beatty, Joanne Medlin, Romel McMurray, Robert P., and Craig Harris to the Ethics Committee. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Motion to confirm carries, thank you.
Item seven, steering would like to confirm Charles Kennard to the Rutherford County Board of Health, a four-year term that expires June 2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to confirm Charles Kennard to the Rutherford County Board of Health. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries, thank you.
Item eight, we wish to confirm Carl Boyd, Alan McAdoo, and Jeff Phillips to the Insurance Committee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Carl Boyd, Alan McAdoo, and Jeff Phillips to the Insurance Committee, which is really the Risk Management Committee. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries, thank you.
Item nine, steering wishes to confirm the appointment Judicial Commissioner Ryan McGuire, Michael Strange, Zay Ship. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to confirm three judicial commissioners. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to confirm, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to confirm carries, thank you.
Item ten, we'd like to announce four vacancies on the Audit Committee, two commissioners, one school board, appointed two-year terms, one road board appointment, two-year terms, and two citizens, two-year terms. Item eleven, we'd like to also announce one vacancy on Codes Enforcement, Adjustment, and Appeals Board. Current term ends November 2022. Item twelve, we wish to announce one CCRC vacancy to fill a retiring member's term, term to end July 1st, 2024. Item thirteen, we also announce one CCR Commission-represented vacancy, term to be coterminous. Item fourteen, there is an announcement for one commissioner vacancy for the Agricultural Advisory Board. This is a two-year term. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Next is item J, resolution to approve our consent agenda. Call on our chairman, Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Mr. Chairman, this seems to be the longest consent agenda I've ever seen. But just for the newly-elected commissioners, anything that you see moving forward on the consent agenda, it only takes one commissioner to take an item off and for that item to be discussed separately and voted on separately, and all you have to do is just let me know and we'll take it off. Having said that, I find that the consent agenda is in order and move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. Any questions? Nothing financial on that, I don't think. So we'll just have a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please. I'm sorry, I've just been corrected for the first time tonight. Dead gummit, it won't be the last probably. We'll be on the board for this. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Have no unfinished business on our agenda. Item M, report by the standing committees. I'm going to call the chairman's name, and if you would, stand and give us kind of what's going on in your next meeting date, if you would. First up is our budget and finance. Chairman Robert P.
You're going to make me look at the calendar. Our first meeting in October will be sixth. This is kind of a confusing time when we're changing so many faces in county government. And one of the things you'll see too, our committees are changing, and we actually did not have a Budget Committee meeting for the month of September. Normally we would. We had several items that came up. One in particular had to go to an emergency approval, and I think we'll talk about that under the other business, so I'm not really going to get into the nuts and bolts of these, but I want to assure you that there's nothing been going on, that we're hiding from anybody. When we do look at these under other business, I want anybody that's got any questions whatsoever, bring these out, because as a rule, most of these items have not gone through the committee process that we normally do. However, time constraints are the reason that we go ahead and brought this up under other business. The mayor is well aware of what's been going on, also along with our chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman P. Health and Ed, Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be meeting with the secretary to confirm our meeting dates so we can all figure out what is the fourth Thursday after the first Monday. So, yeah, so it's kind of complicated. So we, guys, we have a budget in excess of $400 million. We have a five-year building plan that theoretically is $100 million a year, and it rotates. We have devoted a nickel of our tax rate every year just to maintenance, and the last two years, we've actually doubled that. The school board contributed last year, I think we contributed another nickel the year before that. So I will be, I've already talked to Trey Lee, who is the engineer, for lack of a better term, for the school board, and so I think we'll be updating that five-year plan with Trey. And I look forward to, which I haven't done yet, having another meeting with the new superintendent of schools and new school board members. And with Sunshine Laws, we cannot all do that. We cannot do that jointly, but if any of you guys on the board want to meet with school board members or the superintendent, I think they would entertain that request. So I think we'll be ready to go. Our next meeting appears to be this month, on the 29th. Correct me if I'm wrong, or I will get out a memo if that's incorrect.
Tuesday, the 27th.
Tuesday, the 27th, excuse me, thank you. That's, there's your Thursday right there. I'm stuck on Thursdays from some other committees, so Tuesday, the 27th.
Thank you, Chairman Dodd. Property Management, Chairman McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, our committee will meet fourth Thursday, which is October 29th at 5:30. We have several ongoing projects, and we will be discussing them the 29th. Hopefully, we can get some information out to the property management committee members prior to that. And also last month, we did have an emergency situation at 20 North concerning leaks from the ceiling on our duty equipment, and they are working on that as far as I know. They have resolved that situation, and they are doing some other works on some other floors that are leaks, but that, that is moving on good, and we're not in an emergency situation of shutting our system down. Also, tonight, I have a resolution, so I need to come forward and present that.
Yes, please.
Okay, normally in discussion, this could have been put under the consent agenda, but we're pulling it off the consent agenda tonight just as maybe an example of a property, of a committee meeting, presentation. So on the Property Management Committee, proposed city of Murfreesboro water line construction easement on, on the county property along New Salem Highway. Resolution, whereas it is in the best interest of the residents of Rutherford County to enter into a temporary construction easement between Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro for the purpose of the city of Murfreesboro installing water lines underneath New Salem Highway, as reflected on the documents attached heretofore as Exhibit One, copies of which are incorporated herein at length verbatim for the betterment of the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the easement described herein above be and the same hereby is approved, and further that the county mayor and any other required county official be and hereby authorized to execute on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, a proper instrument memorizing such easement to be recorded in the Rutherford County Register Office, subject to county attorney approval, and I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve item 3A, the proposed city of Murfreesboro water line construction easement. Questions?
Before we vote on this, I'm going to give you a little summary. We did have a discussion on this water line, and it's right in front of the jail. So we had one concern that maybe if they do this, would they shut off the water to the jail? So they assured us, Sheriff, that they would negotiate this with you and that they would not shut off that water. So if you have any issues with it, you need to let us know. But that was presented to the last Property Management Committee.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Any questions or comments? We'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes, thank you. This was, we kind of used Commissioner McAdoo, Chairman McAdoo, for a guinea pig tonight to let you guys know the things that are typical that we put on the consent agenda. This is a little bit of a standard operating procedure, and it usually passes without any objection. So if you see something that looks lengthy on the consent agenda, and this was several pages, and you want to pull it off the consent agenda, all you have to do is make that request. But this is typical of an item that we normally put on consent agenda, and we just wanted to get that out in the open tonight so that we could all kind of be on the same page, okay? Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. Let me ask a quick question here. The property management is scheduled to meet the fourth Thursday, is that correct?
That is correct. Fourth, fourth Thursday, which is October 29th, if I'm not mistaken.
October 22nd is the fourth Thursday.
Okay, the 22nd then.
Is that the date?
That's the date.
October 22nd.
Five thirty.
October 22nd for property management at 4:30. Five thirty. Guess I was thinking of the BZA that we had on Wednesday night, thank you. September 22nd, did I say October? Thank you. All right, our county attorney's keeping score, it's two, two strikes. Next, item M4, Public Safety. Chairman Pettis Reed.
As many of you noticed, public safety don't look like public safety used to with the new committee that we have, and I'm excited about what our committee is going to be there. I was looking at it a while ago as I sat here and looked at the new names. We now have a police officer in there. We have a military man with us, too. We have our chaplain with us, and then we have a lady that's in here now. So I think when we look at that, and then you've got these old heads that's been here before, I think we've got a public safety committee that's going to be outstanding in what we're going to do and what we're looking at now. You've been hearing about public safety buildings, and yes, we're still interested in those public safety buildings and getting those where they need to go. We have two that are in construction at this time, two more that have broken, that will be breaking ground here pretty soon, and I think that's something to be excited about, something that the communities are excited about, and this committee will be totally involved in what those will be doing there. When you look at public safety, a lot of people think that we're only, whenever this committee meets, that we're only be looking at our firemen, be looking at our policemen, be looking at the ambulance service, but there'll be other groups that come before us, too. We'll be looking at PAWS. And then we also look at all of our recovery courts. And then I want to remind everybody, tomorrow morning at 10:30, we have one of our graduations at one of our recovery courts. Love to see everybody there, and this will be a very special one, because at this one, Speaker Cameron Sexton will be there speaking. This will be one that you'll have a big turnout for, and we'd love to see as many commissioners there as possible, because I have heard so much of thanks given to this commission board here, this commission group, for what we have done to create these recovery courts. We hear so much about what they have done to affect lives within this county and people. I know Commissioner Harris and myself heard this just this week as we worked on some things dealing with our drug abuse within this county, and the way that they were talking about the fact of what the turnout that has come through these, these courts. And I think if you have that time tomorrow morning at 10:30, come over to the Judicial Building, go through this and sit there and hear these courts, and this will be a very important part of it. And I do encourage as many members of our public safety team to be there and to see what's happening there. So I look forward to working with this committee. I think you'll hear some good things out of this committee this year.
Monday, the 26th, 5:30? Very good. And the Recovery Court will be in this room. Thank you. Thank Commissioner Reed. Public Works, Chairman Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, I will check with Rachel Leahy, but I believe our next meeting will be October 4th at 5:30 in this room, but I will check with Rachel, and she will send out an announcement. Planning in Public Works, we look at reports and get the wants and needs for planning and engineering, Doug Demossi and Mike Hughes Department, codes, highway department, and solid waste. We always save solid waste to last, it creates the most discussion, because from the solid waste reports, we then lead into where we are in our movement to life beyond republic. We are getting closer and closer to solutions, not solution, but solutions, to the hill in those gentlemen's and ladies' part of the districts. The October 4th meeting, I plan to give an update, particularly for the new folks, on where we are, what we've done. We have, are undergoing an RFP process for looking at mining our existing landfill or landfills, as to what the cost might be to do that. We are in discussion with Pratt Recycling for a letter of intent. We are in discussion with Pratt Recycling for a letter of intent. We would like to get our county attorney at some point, maybe not, this meeting is already full, but at some point in time, we need to get an update on where we are with Republic. We've had conversations back and forth and we need to see where, if we owe them any information or if we're waiting on any information from them. But the exciting part is we have a new mayor that is passionate about finding new solutions to our problem. And together with the Public Works Committee, we are going to keep moving the ball downfield and very soon, this term, we will have solutions. And you know, our drive has always been to find something that has a large diversion rate of waste out of the landfill, you know, 80 to 100%. We're talking to folks now that, you know, can do the 10 to 20%, but we're looking for the big home run. You know, we don't want to keep putting 80% of our waste back in the landfill. We want to do something with 80 to 90% of our waste. There's a lot of technologies out there. We have vetted a lot of those technologies. Some of those unfortunately, you know, want us to be the guinea pig, and we're not a big fan of being the first in the nation to try some of these new technologies. So it's important to be diligent. It's important to dig into all the facts and the hearsay because we are suffering and bearing the burden of decisions that have come back to haunt us from decades ago. And we do not want that big elephant on our back any longer. So that's why we're being extremely cautious and we want to make sure we have a contract that is solid and defendable. Yeah, defendable. So that's where we are. So I will check the date, but pencil in for October 4th at 5:30 in this room. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Chairman Kush. It is on the calendar for Tuesday, October 4th, 5:30 PM. Let me go ahead and explain that the Planning Commission reports to this commission through our Public Works Department, and the Planning Commission's next meeting dates are 9:00 AM on the 25th of September and 6:00 PM on the 10th of October. Those are both Mondays, I believe. Steering Committee, Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've got two dates. First one is our next meeting will be October 11th at 5:30, and that our meeting after that will go back to the first Monday of the month, which will be November 7th at 5:30. Steering Committee is, which is one of our most important committees, which they all are, but we have some four chairmen on this committee. Have, I think, one of the new commissioners that I'm very excited about, Mr. Beverly, and we have a seasoned commissioner in Michael Rather. We have some problems and stuff we've got to deal with next four years. I think one of the things that we've got to do is we've got to get quality and talent into our boards and committees. I think what we've seen tonight was somebody that was very going to help this county and was very strong. We need people that want to serve, and we had to find those people. Just because we keep wanting to go to people and complain that this person is not this and not that, we've got to go and recruit. We had to find people who want to come, and that's us in all of our these 21 districts. And I think that we can do that, and that's something that I'm going to focus on. I think that we have a strong group and I think we got, like I said, I'm very confident in this group and I'm very excited about this group, and I think that we will do everything in our power to make this county, this commission, successful. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Harris. Item N, under Other Business, as Chairman P mentioned a minute ago, we did not have the opportunity because we didn't have a budget committee in place. These items will be presented by our Finance Director, Michael Smith, and once again, they have not been through the committee process, but it is urgent that they be talked about and approved if at all possible tonight. Michael.
I think Chairman P is going to read, or Commissioner P is going to read the resolutions for us, and then I can explain them right before he reads the resolutions if you want, or...
Good. Chairman P.
Promise you, you would have enjoyed hearing Michael read this rather than me. The first item we're going to talk about are, well, I'll just read the resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. And this is accounting in budget, a decreased expenditure of office supplies of $3,500 and increased expenditures from data processing equipment of $3,500. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And that's actually to move new payroll software or to get that. Next is in the jail, and this was actually an emergency expenditure. Our elevator, one of the main elevators at the jail, the public safety people already heard this, went down and causing a great hardship, so that's why this is here. Be equate, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $240,320. Increased expenditures for building improvements, $240,320. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit 2 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Next, also on the sheriff's office, an increase in revenue, the MHTRP and other state grants, An increased expenditure for the MHTRP of $470,662. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit 3 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And that's actually a grant for the mental health transport that we had applied for and approved for them to apply. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Michael, do you have anything to add? Will be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you.
The next item is N B, and this is actually a purchasing agreement. You older commissioners will remember about six to eight months ago, I think it was, we entered into agreements with like six other agencies to do purchasing. Were allowed by the state, federal government to do this and actually take up purchasing bids from out-of-state entities, and this happens to be one of them. Whereas TCA 12-3-1205 permits local governments to participate in cooperative purchasing agreements with one or more other governmental entities outside the state of Tennessee, and whereas Rutherford County participates in certain out-of-state cooperative purchasing agreements, and whereas Rutherford County desires to participate in additional out-of-state cooperative purchasing agreement with GH Armor Systems Incorporated for NASPO value point body armor and ballistics resistant products, a copy of which is attached heretofu as Exhibit A, and whereas the participation in the attached cooperative purchasing agreement is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County in order to help relieve the burdens of governmental purchasing functions and to realize various potential economics, including administrative cost savings. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners pursuant to TCA 12-3-1205, the cooperative purchasing agreement with GH Armor Systems Incorporated for NASPO value point body armor and ballistics resistant products, a copy of which is attached heretofu as Exhibit A and shall be hereby is approved and ratified. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next three items are actually signature changes for our newly elected officials that are required. That's item N1C is the first one. Resolution for facsimile signatures of Rutherford County payroll account. Whereas Truist Bank, Nashville, Tennessee, is a depository bank for Rutherford County payroll account, and whereas Truist Bank is authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, or other orders for the payment of money drawn upon the Rutherford County payroll account, bearing or purporting to bear the facsimile signatures as follows. General Fund, Joe S. Carr, County Mayor, Michael Smith, Finance Director. Road and Bridge Fund, Gregory A. Brooks, Road Superintendent, Joe S. Carr, County Mayor, Michael Smith, Finance Director. General Purpose School Fund, Tammy Sharp, Chair of the Board of Education, James J. Sullivan IV, Director of Schools, Michael Smith, Finance Director. Whereas Truist Bank shall be entitled to honor and to charge accounts for such checks, drafts, or other orders regardless of whom or by what means the actual or purported facsimile signatures thereof have been affixed heretofu as if signature resembles the facsimile specimen duly certified to be filed with Truist Bank. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute the document with Truist Bank authorizing the facsimile signatures for Rutherford County payroll account as listed in the foregoing resolution. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Other questions? Be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Item N1, item N D, Resolution for Facsimile Signature Rutherford County Trustee Warrant Account. Whereas First Bank is a depository bank for the Rutherford County trustee account, and whereas First Bank is authorized and directed to honor warrants, drafts, or other orders of payment of the money drawn on the Rutherford County trustee warrant account, bearing or purporting to bear the facsimile signatures as follows. General Fund, Joe S. Carr, County Mayor, Michael Smith, Finance Director. Road and Bridge Fund, Gregory A. Brooks, Road Superintendent, Joe S. Carr, County Mayor, Michael Smith, Finance Director. General Purpose School Fund, Tammy Sharp, Chair of the Board of Education, James J. Sullivan IV, Director of Schools, Michael Smith, Finance Director. Whereas First Bank shall be entitled to honor and charge the account for such warrants, drafts, or other orders regardless of whom or by what means the actual or purported facsimile signature thereof may have been affixed heretofu as if signature resembles the facsimile specimen duly certified to be filed with First Bank. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of the Rutherford County, of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute documents with First Bank authorizing the facsimile signatures for the Rutherford County trustee account as listed in the foregoing resolution. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Gooch. Have a motion and a second to approve under Other Business, item D. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Passes. Thank you.
Item NE, Resolution, Rutherford County Flexible Spending Account. Whereas Regions Bank, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, is a depository bank for Rutherford County Flexible Spending Account, and whereas Regions Bank is authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, and other orders for payment of money drawn on the Rutherford County Flexible Spending Account, bearing the signatures as follows. Joe S. Carr, County Mayor, Michael Smith, Finance Director. Whereas Regions Bank shall be entitled to honor, to charge the account for such checks, drafts, or other orders regardless of whom or by what means the actual signatures thereof may have been affixed, been affixed heretofu if such signatures resemble the specimen duly certified to be filed with Regions Bank. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute documents with Regions Bank authorizing the signatures for the Rutherford County Flexible Spending Account as listed in the foregoing resolution. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Once again, a motion and a second to approve under Other Business, item E. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you.
Item NF, this resolution is actually a pass-through money for us, and Michael can probably explain this much better than I do, but you have any questions after I read it. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a certain contract with Greater Nashville Regional Council, the GNRC. A copy of this same being attached heretofu as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for assistance in performing certain administrative functions related to a community development block grant for recovery housing awarded in fiscal year 2022, and whereas a fee up to $45,600 as detailed therein shall be paid from the general, from the community development block grant for recovery housing funds to GNRC for its assistance. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with GNRC. A copy of the same being attached heretofu as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for assistance in performing certain administrative functions related to a community development block grant for recovery housing as detailed herein. Resolve this 15th day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Questions?
Please.
I do have a question. Certain administrative functions is kind of vague. Can we get some clarity there, please?
Sure.
So this community development block grant is actually going to be passed on to Dor...
on to doors of hope for housing there, and there are certain requirements, reporting requirements that come with this block grant that we here at the county do not have the expertise to file, and so GNRC will be taking on the administrative functions as far, as far as filing the required reports, as far as determining eligibility, and what some of these funds can be spent on by doors of hope. We're really just acting as the pass-through and holding the money, and then GNRC will be working with them on funds allowable ability, the reporting back to the government, and things like that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Other questions? Have a motion and a second to approve item F under other business, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Item NG, and I'm just going ahead and read this resolution. I think it's self-explanatory, but again, if you have questions, we've got people here that can answer them. Whereas Rutherford County established a select committee known as the Select Committee for Distribution of Funds from Opioid Settlement Proceeds, that committee, in June 2022 for the purpose of exploring, studying, and recommending how the county should spend opioid settlement proceeds, and whereas Rutherford County recently received opioid settlement funds, and the committee desires to enter into an agreement with WGNS Radio to utilize the opioid settlement funds to provide substance abuse prevention information during football and basketball game broadcasts and podcasts. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor be authorized to execute an agreement with WGNS Radio, a copy of the same being attached hereto is Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to utilize opioid settlement funds to provide substance abuse prevention information during football and basketball game broadcasts and podcasts, and additionally that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize a portion of the opioid settlement funds and to appropriate said funds, alcohol and drug programs, and increased of opioid settlement of $3,500, increased expenditures for advertising to WGNS, $3,500. A copy of the same being attached hereto is Exhibit Two and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolve this fifteenth day of September 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think I would like to give some type of explanation what this money will be used for, and I serve on that task force, Commissioner Harris serves on that task force, along with, I think, what I would call a star team, that is trying to figure out ways that we can reach this community as far as what we're facing here as far as drug abuse. When we think about drug abuse, a lot of times we always think that's somebody else that's affecting a lot of people else that's out here in the community. It doesn't affect anybody I know, but when you know, hear individuals that's within your own church, when you hear people that your neighbor next door, when you hear it's children at the age of 13 that is walking into this, you know we got a problem right here in this county. Last year alone, I think we had 130 situations as far as drugs were concerned. We had eighty, eight hundred, wasn't it Craig, eight hundred individuals overdosed, thirty-seven deaths dealing with this last year, and this year looks even larger in what we're trying to deal with. So we sat around that table just this past week, trying to find out ways of how to use this money, and we're trying to be very careful with it, and one thing that come to us was what WGNS offered to us. How do you reach young people, young adults, and where are they on Friday nights? And one place in particular is all you got to do at night is to step outside and look up into the sky, and know it's not the stars, it's not the airplanes, it's the lights around these football stadiums. And one place they are is on WGNS listening to a football game in one of these schools. And it's on WGNS where we're battling out, and at those football games, somewhere during those games, there's usually an injury, there's a break, or something that we have gone in and bought time where we talk about our problems here in Rutherford County. This is where they're listening to it. This is where we're hoping to get to them and talk to them. These are the young people, these are the families, they're saying, hey, we need help, we're trying to find some way, what can we call, what website can we go to within Rutherford County that they can help us, and we're trying to work hard at this, and we've got a soundbite of what we're going to do this Friday night, tomorrow night, whenever there's a break in that action, and what's going to come up there, and, and Chairman P, if you would, give us that opportunity to play that now before everybody votes so they can hear. This is just one, this was one that we just done, and there's going to be a lot, it's going to get a lot better than what we're trying to do. So if they will play that.
Taking a little break in the action, Brian Barrett here with County Commissioner Craig Harris, and we're going to talk about a very interesting subject here that really concerns just about everybody. Craig, I guess if you think about your family, someone has struggled with substance abuse.
Absolutely. You know, we had 130 deaths last year, over 800 overdose calls, and 47 suicides. So dealing with this problem has gotten worse, and right now we're on track to surpass all those numbers.
So Craig, tell me about your efforts.
We tried to focus on three areas with this problem, and that has been awareness, education, and recovery, and the county commission has stepped up. They started off by giving us money, which we have put billboards up around the county, and we have just formed a task force. It is organizations like the Correctional Work Center, Public Safety Chairman, Pettis Reed, Budget and Finance Chairman, Robert P., Recovery Court, Probation, and we have a citizen who used to be over our recovery courts. It's just a all-star of people who are focused and determined to, to combat this, this horrible epidemics that is going on, and trying to somehow get in front of this, which, you know, we've had drug addictions for, since caveman days, you know, and, and it's always something, but fentanyl and opioids, man-made, they're, they're just scary.
And this substance abuse generally starts at a young age?
Based on our data, that in the highest eighties, somewhere around in that percentage of all opioid addicts usually started drinking and smoking around the ages of 13 and 14 years old.
The effort is to bring more education and awareness to kids in the school system?
We partnered with the superintendent of Rutherford County Schools, and what we've done is we're putting a very comprehensive drug program in our schools, and it's a pilot program. We're starting off in Smyrna Elementary, Smyrna Middle, and Smyrna High School, and it's more comprehensive. It brings awareness, and it also shows, you know, how these, you know, this drug addiction, it doesn't start with somebody. I've never met somebody that woke up and says, I want to be a heroin addict. It's a gradual steps, and it starts with red flags, and that's one of the things we're trying to, to show parents and kids that there is red flags.
If there's someone listening right now that is struggling with substance abuse, know someone, there is help right here in the county for them.
We have a website, it's a Prevention Coalition, which the website is P C, the number four, S dot org, and they will navigate you to someone to talk to, whether it's suicide, drug prevention, that's somebody that the county commission works with, and that's somebody that, you know, we have confidence in.
The Prevention Coalition for Success website is P C, the number four, S dot org, and from there you can have phone numbers, information right there that can help you out. We look forward to hearing more about this, Commissioner Craig Harris.
Our county is going to do everything we can to combat this epidemic.
County Commissioner Craig Harris joining us here. We'll be back with more of the game coming up in just a second.
This is a start, and I want you to understand that. We're just starting with this. We're going to do so much more. We're going to be doing spots, we're going to change this a whole lot, where it's be more catchy and what we're going to do. We're just testing the waters, and as you notice there, we put you in the middle of it, that you're involved in this, and we want to do something, we want to make a difference out there, because what we're talking about are the people of Rutherford County, and what we're talking about are the children, and I think that's what you're interested in and doing. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Chairman Reed.
If I may.
There, Commissioner James.
I'd like to just say something about this. I think it's a great idea. I think there, we can do, do more, go further. For, for example, I know of a family educators and other people who are dealing tonight with suicide of a pre-high school teenager. It's a very sad and realistic thing that happens throughout the countywide, and there is no sure fix. You just, everybody has to stay vigilant, stay, you know, the whole additive of see something, say something, try to reach out and do your best in all courses, because you can prevent a lot of this from the get-go, just by doing the right thing, being the friend, paying attention, being aware of your surroundings. So I'd like to volunteer my time to assist with this. I see in the contract that we're featuring, you know, a couple of commissioners on these. I would love to volunteer my time to assist with this as well and perform this, because this is something, and I'd also like to increase and reach this out for veterans. As a veteran and a currently serving member of the armed forces, it's, it's a great deal for me to make sure that we have as many avenues, that people know about the VFW, the American Legion, how to get in touch with them. There are many resources out there. We just have to reach out, knock on the door, somebody will always answer. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James.
May I speak real quick?
Commissioner McMurray.
Yes, so I would like to thank Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Reed. My personally, my family was affected by a drug overdose by my 20-year-old sister three years ago. So I understand, and so I am willing as well to put all type of resources in my volunteer work to help educate. Now, I know you said WGNS, but I think we can also be reaching out, if we want to reach out to a younger crowd, we've got to go to where they're at on social media. This is my opinion, the TikToks, the Facebooks, the Instagrams, because I honestly don't know how many people or how many 13, 18-year-olds are listening to WGNS. So if that's somewhere in a way that I can help out along with the WGNS spotlight, just feel free to let me know, and I'm, I'm here to help as best as I can.
Anyone else? Or rather?
I have to say it. I too, I think most everybody in here has been affected by drug abuse or overdoses, deaths, suicides, whatever. I would like to ask all 20 of us and the others in this room, every day, set aside five minutes and pray. Cause a drug problem, financial problems, marital problems, all singles around a spiritual problem. So I would like to ask everyone to stop just a few minutes out every day and pray. Pray for those you don't even know. Pray for your family. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So Commissioner Harris, thank you very much. The county has recently hired a public informations officer, and I want to introduce Lisa Kay in the background. Lisa, will you stand up, please? Thank you. And so for all those of us who have an interest in this crisis, I'm telling you, the mayor's office is going to be involved, and Lisa, I want you to take a personal charge and responsibility, not just working with the mayor's office, but also with the county commission on making sure we get the word out on education and treatment for those who need it, because this is a crisis, and we're going to respond to it accordingly. So Commissioner Harris, if you will work with Lisa Kay directly, I would appreciate that, and any other commissioner that wants to be involved, those who stood up and commented and wanted to volunteer their time, I'm sure Ms. Kay would be glad to hear from you. So we're four square behind this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. We all have stories, all right? If you don't know me, and a lot of you don't, and we get in this arena, and we fight, and we argue, and it's not about that. You know, I have a family member that I deal with this every day, and I get emotional about it because I am trying to save you all from having to go through what I go through. Pain, I mean, it's unbearable. It's unbearable. You have no idea. And if you truly knew me, and you know that I'm going through this with a family member, you would know why I'm so passionate. What you guys did here today, I'm touched. I'm touched. You listened to a recording, me and Commissioner Reed did that. He did that whole thing, and we have $570,000 for the next 18 years. What can we do with that? What can we do with that? And I need every single person, it's not about this committee, it's about everybody, and to figure out how we do it. Get more help with the Sheriff's Department. Get more case managers for Recovery Court. Help organizations who have halfway houses. Let's do what we can. I'm honored, thank you. I mean that with the bottom of my heart, and I look forward to working with the new POI. I look forward to working with Joe Carr. Forward to working with all you. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I serve on the board of the Coalition for Success, and Sarah Murphy is the executive director for that program. She, you know, the member of the committee mentioned the name of the Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Reed, and the other more often, so that's why we discussed this. We meet once a month. Thank you.
Chair. I'm also got drug on to this board. I said drug on, so I wouldn't, don't intend that pun, although I like puns. However, I got that by being the chairman of budget, not because. I was passionate about this, but to sit in this room with these people that are, you can't help but realize what a problem that we've got, and I want each and every one of you, this is not about Chairman Harris over here promoting himself on WGNS. Any of you that are interested in doing spot programs like that, I'm sure we'd entertain it. I know I do. I'm on the committee. I see the other two chairmen here that are on the committee are nodding. We want your help, we want your input. Craig mentioned quite a bit of money that's out there, and that was part of the reason I was thrown in the bunch, but we've been talking to Mr. Beatty, and also to Michael, our finance director, and we're not just out here throwing money, and one of the things we're looking at is maybe setting up not a grant, but something that people in the county say, hey, I've got this problem, y'all have helped me with this, we can donate to it, you know, have a special program. This money does not, has to be spent, just throwing it out the window here. We want good programs that will work. We want something that we can provide for the future and perpetuate this, something similar to Christie Hughesian grants. You know, that's something, all this money doesn't have to be spent at once, but I want you to know that the desires for this committee is to help promote awareness and to prevent the deaths. I don't know how many of you, and I know some of you have, have been out knocking on doors, and you face people that have gone through this, and it's, it's not, it's not fun, it's not a good time talking about it, but being able to help people like that and prevent it in the future, that's what this committee is all about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Strike three. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to approve item G under other business. We're on the board, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. Chairman P., thank you. Good job on such a short notice. These are typical of the items that we will not have on the consent agenda every month. Without objection, I'd like to add item H to our other business agenda. Our county clerk has some information that she needs to inform us about. So without objection, Lisa?
So pursuant to the Private Act regarding the Juvenile Detention Center Board, we need to spread the oaths of those members on the minutes of the commission. So what we need is a motion and a second for this to be added to the minutes.
This, uh?
Sorry, who so moved? Who was the second?
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Nick, if you would, give us a brief explanation.
Yeah, the Private Act that was passed last year for this board requires that the oaths of the members that were appointed just last month be spread on the minutes. That's an antiquated term, but the way that we can spread something on the minutes is to present it to you and get an approval to put it on the official minutes of the county legislative body.
Everybody understand? Did we have a vote?
It's more, we didn't, but.
Do we have a motion and a second? Would, would you please raise your hand? Who, who made the motion?
We, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second to approve item H from the county clerk under other business. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our meeting. I will go ahead and tell you that our next commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October the 13th. And let me go ahead and pass out some other information. Our insurance committee will meet at 1:00 PM on Thursday, the 29th. And it appears that our opioid committee meeting will be meeting on Wednesday, October the 12th at 9:00 AM. Is that correct? All the rest of them, we've talked about. So you can put those two on your calendar if you wish. Other announcements? Chairman Harris.
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow, Saturday at 10:00 AM, we have a Recovery Fest, which is something that I've always supported. It, it is recovery and people fighting to, to battle recovery. And we, I've asked by the governor to, to do a proclamation, and I'll also be opening up ceremonies. So it's at Family Worship Center on Memorial, 3045 Memorial Drive, and it's from 10 to 2. I hope some of y'all can make it. Thank you.
Saturday, 10:00 AM. Other announcements? Come on, Robert. Really? Commissioner Reed? Really? Very good. I'd like to recognize Sheriff Fitchu and Chief Deputy Spence and Lowry for being here tonight. Thank you for being here and keeping guard over us. We feel safer with your presence. Thank you for being here. Any other announcements? The chair would like to express his appreciation for your attendance, your participation. One quick recognition, Commissioner James, thank you for your service. You mentioned that during your presentation a minute ago. And I'd like to thank you for your service to this county and your volunteerism for offering to help on this opioid position. But thank you. Anything else? Once again, thank you for your time, your attendance, your participation. We are adjourned.